All right. Time is seven oh three. I'll call to order the city of Torrington planning and zoning commission meeting for July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Attendance this evening is by zoomer and poor person at City Hall auditorium room two eighteen one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for zoom are available online at www dot Torrington C T dot org slash zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You can call in at one six four six five five eight eighty-six fifty-six, meeting ID seven ninety-five dash nine fifty dash seventy thirty-five. Passcode is nine zero seven one four eight. Moving on to agenda item number two attendance serving on the commission this evening is Diane Carroll, Greg Parisino. Remotely is Donovan Riley, myself, Greg Mealy also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifer. Moving on to agenda item number three minutes for approval A for six twenty-eight twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I'll move them in.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Paul is in favor. Opposed, so moved. Moving out to agenda item number four, old business A special exception twenty-three dash zero three. I'm sorry.
I must, I, I must have staying.
Okay.
Who was that?
That was abstention on the.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You're freezing down and I don't know why, but you are freezing.
I'll start again. Number four, old business A special exception twenty-three dash zero three and site plan fourteen fifty-seven applicant Randall Stelma. Location Newfield Road assessor map three, three, one block zero, zero, one lot zero, two, six. Proposal farm stand. The public hearing is closed on six twenty-eight twenty-three. Just as a reminder, the public hearing is closed. There will be no further input from the public. That being said. Mission members.
Whoa.
Comments or feedback?
I'm sorry, just, just for the record anyway, Donovan wasn't here for the, for the public hearing last month.
Okay.
So I think it's.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes.
So. I wasn't objectionable to the actual farm stand itself. I was objectional to the extended uses that were proposed in the plan. And I asked that it go back and be relooked at from that standpoint. In other words, if you want a farm stand.
Correct.
To get rid of excess produce, which is how it was kind of couched when it was presented. That's kind of where I'm focused. And I don't know if it was. Changed, meaning the applicant decided to. Change it or do something different or whatever it comes back to. I thought it was asked for a bit more clearer site plan to show the trees.
Oh, just click over to the other tab.
Sorry about that.
Can we see that site plan that was originally out here?
There it is. It just needs to be maximized. There we go. Just, yeah, go to. Oh, you got, you had it.
I'm, I'm trying to. Pick with this.
Yeah, one of the, the.
There you go.
Well, parking was the biggest.
Just bring us maybe the second P.
Well, the component of the food truck on site was.
Well, he agreed.
Perfect, right, right.
So. The, what we had requested as, you know, for, for our, our conditions was that the. Food truck be eliminated and we had more parking on the, on the front of the property.
Correct. And that plan has been.
Yeah, so you can see it. It had two, it had two parkings, only had two parking spaces on the previous and there's four, there's four there now. The one thing we did ask for was an additional parking space behind the farm stand for. To the rear of the farm stand for employees.
Yep.
That hasn't been marked on there, but we can look at that conditionally.
Yep.
And Paul had some input.
Yeah, it all, it all had to do with the, the permits and the, and the design of the curb cut.
Yep.
Which we can also condition. He just has to work that out with Paul when he pulls, pulls the permit to be sure that. That he's got the proper design in the, in the street right away.
You want to dive into your memo?
Sure.
Please.
Randall Stelma has filed an application for property on Newfield Road assessors map two thirty-one block zero, zero, one lot zero, two, six. To install a two hundred square foot farm stand, eight hundred square foot greenhouse, new driveway curb cut and parking in an area for a food truck. The property is owned by Randall and Aaron Stelma is five point zero eight acres in area and is located in the R sixty residential zone. There are no previous site plan approvals in the city records for this property. The proposed farm stand use is allowed in the R sixty residential zone by special exception under zoning regulations section three point one. Table of permitted uses subsection twelve point two zero. Farmer's roadside stand. The greenhouse structure is allowed under section twelve point one zero farm uses. The commission may allow a food truck under certain conditions as an accessory use to the farm operation if it is deemed. An appropriate accessory use to the farm stand. A public hearing for the special exception and a new site plan approval are required for this proposed project. The review of this application is guided by the site plan requirements of section eight point four. And the general special exception review standards of in section eight point two. A set of plans has been submitted titled site plan Torrington, Connecticut parcel number two, three, one. Zero, zero, one, zero, two, six by Eric A. Jarboe P E dated six twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. We have a revision on the, on the most recent plans. Five sheets. Staff has met previously with the property owner to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note. One, as in agricultural use, I recommend the following waivers. A paving of the required van accessible handicap space five point thirteen point two point S. The space shall have a rolled gravel surface to enable access to the proposed farm stand and greenhouse. B site plan requirements eight point four point three point I landscaping plan. And eight point four point three point J utilities plan. The commission should discuss establishing hours of operation and any motion of approval for this application. Three, in reviewing the special exception standards in section eight point two of the zoning regulations. I recommend that, that the commission make a finding that the proposed use location and site design is compatible with the neighborhood. The surrounding uses and is protective of the health, safety and welfare. Of the citizens of the city of Torrington for the granting of a special exception approval. Four, per comments at the public hearing of June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The applicant should add the following to the plans. One additional parking spaces, including at least two additional public spaces. And one space for the employee of the farm stand for a total of five spaces. And two, identify all existing trees within the project area greater than twelve inch DBH and shown on the plans. Five, per comments at the public hearing of June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The applicant should remove the proposed food truck area that is proposed. The commission is not in favor of allowing a food truck on the site due to parking space restrictions. Other staff comments. Assistant planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, assistant city planner in an email to the city planner dated June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Offered the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, there are regulated water courses in the vicinity of the subject property that require wetlands review for this proposal. On June twentieth, the applicant received a determination from the inland wetlands commission. That the proposed plan is an as of right agricultural activity and does not require a permit. This constitutes a favorable wetland, wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, if possible, retain moderately sized maple trees adjacent to the city right away along Newfield Road. And retain a vegetated buffer along the small tributary to the Noggetuck River. Lighting, no lighting is shown on the plan. New lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the city zoning code. Including the use of full cutoff fixtures. We encourage use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. A sign permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the conservation commission for review and comment. Architectural review committee, this application was not referred to the A R C for comment. Engineering, Paul Conson's city engineer in a memorandum to the city planner dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Submitted a list of conditional comments to be addressed by the applicant. See the comments attached. Police traffic, police traffic sergeant Dustin Baldus. In an email to me dated, oh, that's not the right date, offered the following comments on the plans. I have no comment on this farm stand food truck greenhouse for future. If a food truck is in play here, they just need to make sure to follow the vendor guidelines. W P C A administrative assistant Cheryl Lewis and building official Kevin Gillette indicated that their respective departments have no comments on this application. No comments were received regarding this application from the city economic development office. Staff at the Torrington area health district or the fire marshal's office. Conclusion, I recommend approval of special exception twenty-three dash zero three. And site plan fourteen fifty-seven to install a two hundred square foot farm stand, eight hundred square foot greenhouse. New driveway curb cut and parking at property on Newfield Road assessors map two, three, one block zero, zero, one lot zero, two, six. As presented on submitted plans with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the operation of a food truck on the property shall not be approved as part of this application. And shall be removed and substituted by two additional parking spaces on the final plans. Two, one additional parking space for employees of the farm stand shall be located to the rear of the property on the final plans. Three, the applicant shall address all remaining comments from city engineer Paul Consons. With respect to city engineering standards for driveway curb cuts. And plan details prior to the issuance of zoning of a zoning permit for the project. See the latest email comments from the city engineer dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Four, the farm stand shall be attended at all times when open to the public. Five, per zoning regulation section two point two farm stand. At least seventy-five percent of the products sold at the farm stand shall be from the farm where the stand is located. Six, the applicant shall follow the comments from Nate Nardi Cyrus. Assistant planner outlined in his June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three email to the city planner. The requirement for landscaping plan shall be waived. However, the applicant shall work with the assistant planner to install appropriate screening and visual buffering. To the property at nineteen twenty-nine Newfield Road to the north of this property. Seven, the requirement for paving of the van accessible handicap space on site shall be waived. The parking space en route to the farm stand shall be a flat rolled gravel surface that is suitable for accessibility. Eight, the operation of the farm stand and associated uses shall occur no earlier than blank A M and no, no later than blank P M. Nine, a zoning permit is required prior to the alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Ten, the planning and zoning commission finds that the proposed use location and site design. Is compatible with the neighborhood and surrounding uses. And is protective of the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Torrington. In accordance with the general and specific special exception standards of section eight point two of the zoning regulations. And state statutes and policies governing agricultural agricultural uses. Eleven, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, due to the nature of the proposed use, the commission waives the requirement for the filing of a Mylar plan with the city clerk. B, two paper copies of the full approved plan set, including the engineer's stamp. The approval letter and chairman's signature box on the title page shall be submitted for the chairman's signature. Prior to the issuance of zoning permits.
Thank you, Jeremy. Just a couple of comments, the. Number four, the farm stand should be attended at all times to the public. I know that was a bit of conversation and it may be the honor system, but I think this is a wise.
Yeah.
Component.
Yeah, that's, that's really the concerns of the, of the, of the neighbors of the property, so.
I also have an issue about that, or not an issue, but a suggestion. People going by this is a small piece of property. It seems like we should add something that says they should have a sign that says open or closed, very visible sign. Because it prevents people from pulling in. And then finding out, oh, it's not open and then having to move out of the site. So it could, I think it could help with not having traffic. You know, less movements in and out of the property.
Yeah, and I, and I was trying to decipher my notes from the last meeting and I think, I think I just missed that in the comments, but yeah, that makes, that makes sense and. We had discussed possibly having them put a, put a chain across it.
That was another.
You know, with the, when it was, when it was closed, I mean, we can add, we can add that as.
Something like that, something that gives the public clear knowledge. It's either open for business or not.
So that, I think Diane can probably.
We're adding, we're gonna add maybe to, to that particular area. Where the farm stand shall be attended at all times when open to the public. And you could say right there, I think perhaps that. There should be an open or closed sign posted. For the public's knowledge. Do you want to add the chain?
It, what do you guys, I mean.
Lines with the regulations, size and so forth.
Oh, you mean it says, yeah, well, so open and closed are, are okay.
Yeah, open and close, you know, adequately sized, so they can be read.
Yeah, so you can see it as a passerby, yep.
As far as the chain goes, I, I think that. That might be what, though. I don't.
We just discussed it last meeting, so, yeah.
I would just go with the sign. I think the sign is, it's clear. People aren't going to turn in, you know, it's clearly closed, so no sense, I'll just drive by. Kind of thing.
Seen from both directions.
Seen from both.
Yeah, we, we set it up, yep.
All right.
Well, in, in conjunction with the open or close sign, you know. Does that get? Introduced with the hours on one sign, maybe, you know, open X to X.
Yeah, problem with the X to X.
We don't, and we don't have to do hours of operation. I put, I put it in there.
I don't, I think it's important to probably identify. You know, at least certain hours, but what I'm trying to find out is. And if. When you have. Time changing. You know, you have to be sensitive to, well, it's open from seven till seven. Well, not really, because in the fall, seven o'clock is going to be dark and this is not a lit property.
Right.
So I think we have to be careful what we say regarding that. I mean, if anything. You would say something like. No earlier than one hour after dawn. And no earlier or no later than one hour prior to dusk. Okay, you could do it that way.
Yeah.
Which covers what variations might exist during the time that he's open. Because if he's open early spring, well, that's a different timeframe. And that continues through the winter or through the summer, but granted, he's probably not going to be open during the winter.
Right.
But, you know.
See the. Later in the season, it's.
You know, the, the verbiage of operation of the farm stand. You know, I'm reading into it, you know, I have my truck loaded with produce and so forth that I'm bringing down. I think it's the actual, the actual hours of the farm stand, if there's going to be.
Open to the public.
Definitive.
Open to the public.
Yeah.
And we can make it that definitive, you know, the farm stand can be, can be open to the public during these hours. But I, I think.
I mean, do you throw hours out there or nine to six or?
Well, you know, to Greg's point, it's going to change based on the season. So. What did, what did you say? Hour, hour?
I would say.
Hour after dawn.
I would say no earlier than one hour. After dawn and no later than one hour prior to dusk.
That wasn't, that wasn't even their intention. They were thinking more.
Few hours, few hours, but we don't, we also don't want to hamstring them in case they want to be open for a Saturday, for a whole Saturday or something.
And my name, if we're going to put that, if we're not going to put the hours down, then fine, then it's moved. But if you're going to put the hours down, I don't see how you can do it any other way.
Yeah.
Well, again, there's no electricity there, so.
No, you can't have it.
It's dependent on the daylight, yeah.
It's not that they plan on doing, but you know, it's just, it's your, you're being very definitive.
Yeah.
I think it's important that, you know, you know, it's a stone, don't. Don't miss turning it over.
Shall occur, well, even just to use Jeremy's memo, operation of the farm stand associated uses, uses. Shall occur no earlier than dawn and no later than dusk. Is that simplistic enough?
It's simplistic enough, yeah.
Right?
It's daylight hours.
Or you could make it clear and you could say daylight hour. Instead of dawn to dusk, it must, but it can only occur during daylight.
And we can't. But that pushes it to nine o'clock at night and so on. Be right with.
As long as it's daylight, my concern is not. Not. Anything other than. It's not a lit site. We're not requiring it to be lit. And therefore it becomes dangerous if it's, if it, you know, you're, it's dangerous. In many regards, because people going in and out of sight, that's dangerous. And then you got traffic on the road, which is dangerous, so it's just the wrong thing to be doing. Or it's daylight hour operation only.
Okay, and we could say the farm stand shall be open to the public instead of operation of the farm stand.
Right. Right, I mean. If he wants to do work inside his farm stand, I don't really care what he does. But we're not, we're, we're concerned about the risk of.
Yeah.
We're adjusting number eight.
Yeah.
We're going to say daylight hours.
And that, that.
Operation of the farm stand shall be. Limited to daylight hours.
The farm stand should be open to the public.
Yeah.
During daylight hours only. Very simple. And that gives him much water actually than he has.
And we're not limiting days a week, then.
No, not limiting it at this point, just, we're just saying.
Anything, Diane?
Get with me.
Anything else?
Just for the record, Donovan, did you happen to review this public hearing?
He's, he's not on right now. He keeps on his connections bad.
Okay, bye Donovan.
Well, for the record, Donovan got kicked off, right? Good thing, good thing that didn't matter for Quorum.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Make the motion?
Yes.
Make the motion, make the motion to approve special exception twenty-three dash zero three and site plan fourteen fifty-seven applicant Randall Stelman. Location Newfield Road assessor map two, three, one block zero, zero, one lot zero, two, six proposal farm stamp. With the following conditions and recommendations. Number one, the operation of a food truck on the property shall not be approved. As part of this application and shall be removed and substituted by two additional parking spaces on the final plans. One additional parking space for employees of the farm stand shall be located to the rear of the property on the final plans. The applicant shall address all remaining comments from city engineer Paul Constance. With respect to city engineering standards for driveway curb cuts and plan. Details prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for the project. See the latest email comments from the city engineer dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Four, the farm stands, the farm stand shall be attended at all times when open to the public. And with an open, closed sign clearly visible. Five, per zoning regulations section two point two farm stand, at least seventy-five percent of the products. Sold at the farm stand shell. Shall be from the farm where the sand is, stand is located. Six, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus assistant planner outlined in his June twenty-second. Two thousand and twenty-three email to the city planner. The requirement for a landscaping plan shall be waived. However, the applicant shall work with the assistant planner. To install appropriate screening and visual buffering to the property at nineteen twenty-nine. Newfield Road to the north of this property. The requirement for paving of the van accessible handicap space on the site shall be waived. The parking space in route, route to the farm stand shall be a flat rolled gravel surface that is suitable for accessibility. Number eight, public operation of the farm stand and associated uses. Shall occur during daylight hours only. Number nine, a zoning permit is required prior to alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Ten, the planning and zoning commission finds that the proposed use location and site design is compatible with the neighborhood. And surrounding uses and is protective of the health, safety and welfare. Of the citizens of the city of Torrington. In accordance with the general and specific special exception standards of section eight point two. Of the zoning regulations and state statutes and policies governing agricultural uses. Eleven, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, due to the nature of the proposed use, the commission waives the requirement for the filing of a Mylar plan with city clerk. B, two paper copies of the full approved plan. Set including the engineer's stamp, the approval letter and chairman's signature box on the title page. Shall be submitted for the chairman's signature prior to issuance of zoning permits.
All those in favor?
Fine.
You have to vote. I'm sorry, you have to vote on this one?
Yeah.
Donovan's on as well.
Also. I. Donovan's back, okay.
I'm back. I, I familiarized myself with the minutes from the last meeting. I just asked the, asked the. Asked the chairman if, if then I could vote or would still need to abstain since it wasn't, wasn't at the meeting.
I think at this point, he didn't hear the entire motion.
Yeah.
He came on halfway through it.
I, I don't, I don't think it's probably better for you to abstain because.
We do, we'll have one up. You Donovan, thank you for your input, though.
Nope, yep.
So moved. Alrighty, moving out to agenda item number five, A new business. Propose change of zoning regulation applicant McCall behavior health network proposal. Revives. Section three point one table of uses subsection one point eight three to allow a group care facility with seven to twelve residents. By special exception in the local business zone. We need to set a public hearing date. The suggested date is August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll move.
All is in favor?
Fine.
Opposed? So moved. Moving out to agenda item number five, B special exception twenty-three dash zero four and site plan fourteen fifty-eight applicant David. Ooh.
I don't know, is it?
Well sick, quality barns and sheds LLC location Winston Road. Assessor map two thirty-eight block zero, zero, two lot zero, zero, six proposal, display and sales of outdoor structures. We need to set a public hearing date. The suggested date is August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Fine.
Hi. Opposed, so moved. Moved out to agenda item number six correspondence, A zoning and blight violation update. We're fortunate to have Nate with us this evening.
Yeah, I can, I can test.
So, so that I, oh yeah, you know what? The mic, the microphones are working over there. It's just the, I was having problems trying to get the screen on.
Yeah.
Tap, tap one of them. I think it's all right. Yeah, right.
Good opportunity to test this out.
I tried, that's what, that was what I was trying to do is roll that thing out just to, just to test it out.
Have, have you all seen this before?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wow, that's cool.
For the little people.
Real slick.
So, so just before Nate starts, the one other piece is that, that screen over there is also rollable for when the, and, and we could, we could hook it up when the engineers need to use it. So we can move it right over here.
Wow, and Nate's going to be here at every meeting?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yeah, right.
People on Zoom where that can be seen.
Yeah, so we would move it, we would, I think it's like over there would be the best place, but. The engineers with that should be able, we'll, we'll have to work.
Like sharing a screen.
We have to work this out with, with I T. We could probably set that one to be shareable or either that or the engineers will have to sign in on a laptop. But they'd be able to. Use that screen for a display.
And the really cool thing about that screen is that they can write on it. So there's a pen and they can actually like, you know, notate comments.
Mark out their plans on the screen.
Yeah. Um. Regarding the. Zoning enforcement report, it's done biannually. I guess the, the latest numbers, I'll go over the summary. There's sixty-one active enforcement cases. Three of them are new since the last report in June, two thousand and twenty-three. Four of those are with corporation counsel for legal action. Fifteen have cease and desist orders on them and six were brought into compliance, so. We've come down three cases net since the last report. I'll just make a note generally on this that. Many of the cases with corporation counsel right now are hopefully nearing completion or, or some kind of final. Compliance and similarly with the cease and desist orders, we have a lot of things that are kind of on hold. To make sure that things either stay in compliant. Or, you know, that they're compliant with a court order or whatever it might be, so. I'm happy to answer any questions on the actual report itself.
I don't have a question on the report. The only thing I'm asking is. I had indicated through an email that, that there was a piece on Torrenford West Street that needed to be addressed. It actually, the address I believe is not Torrenford West, it's the corner of Torrenford West and. Woodlawn Drive. It's, it's a mess.
Oh.
Was that for blight?
That somebody take.
It looked like. One forty-four Woodlawn.
Right, okay, I, yeah, I didn't receive that, but that was probably while I was away.
I understand it's a town came by and did a swipe on the corner of the mowing.
Okay.
And I'm being told that they're being fined as well.
Okay, this must be through, is it on Ashley's report? I didn't.
Probably on Ashley's, because I, I sent the email to her.
What's, what's the address or?
Forty-four Woodlawn?
Yep, it's on Ashley's report.
Okay.
To inoperable vehicles vandalism debris on premises overgrowth.
Yes.
And so she sent a notice of violation on six, seven, twenty-three. And had, had prescribed follow-up on six twenty-two that I'm not, I'm not sure what the status of that is at this point, so.
The property has had some impact. I mean, there's been some activity, but still is not right.
Okay, yeah, she's, she's out this week, so we'll catch up with her next week.
I just wanted to make sure we had that on.
And they also do not do any shoveling or plowing.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll definitely, it's on her list and so, you know, they're kind of subject to inspections.
They're actually trying to sell it.
I was going to say there's a, there's two signs for a real estate agent on, on the property. And, and you're saying the city is the one that cut the, the grass finally?
Did one cap on Torrenford West and the Woodlawn side.
Yeah, because it's not all cut, just a piece of it.
Okay.
So we. They've since mowed part of the front.
Does, does she have? Yeah. Oh, yeah, I, I noticed that the front looked a lot better. Afterwards, mowed. Um, afterwards mowed.
The front's still very hot.
Yeah, but it's still a mess.
Sure was on our list and we were gonna pay attention.
So so did she know, um, I I lost my thought there.
You're not supposed to do that, you're too young.
I know. She totally lost my thought there. No, it's gone, forget it.
Is there something on there for Dome and Drive with some abandoned cars and debris in the backyard?
Uh, that actually sounds familiar.
Like a lot of debris in the back.
I don't see anything on the blight list, um, and I don't recall dealing with anything on Dome and Drive outside of permit, so. If you give us an address, I'll definitely have her follow up on it um as a complaint.
Forty-ish or one-twenty-ish.
Okay.
It's, yeah, on the side of a house that was, I think that house was one-thirty-two or one-thirty-six.
Right, prior to May, Ashley was in part-time doing part-time blight, and now that she's on full-time, you know, we're hopeful that we can do. More proactive stuff, um, but this, I think constitutes as a complaint, an internal complaint, so she can definitely follow up on that site.
Another thing that is more of a zoning issue. Permit used came up today, I got a call from a person who was saying that they live on Pine Street.
Okay.
And across the street from Pine Street is a house that had a vacant lot. The guy with the house next to the vacant lot bought the vacant lot. He put a for rent sign on the lot and there's an RV on it.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, she asked me, she says, is that permitted? I said, no.
No, it's not.
So you're gonna have to, I will ask her to do. And I said to her, I will check it out, but I will ask her to formalize a complaint. To you guys, to your, to the P and Z, you know, department. And say, look, this is what's going on, she could give you the information like the address and et cetera.
Yeah.
And then you can look at it.
That'd be great, that's always helpful.
I knew that it was incorrect, it should not be done.
Right.
But um I wanted to make sure I voiced my opinion tonight on the issue, and then I'll, at least you'll be aware that somebody will follow up. Her name is Dean Curry.
Okay.
So you are.
If a formal complaint complaint is filed and the person the complaint is on asks who sent the complaint in. Do you have to tell them?
Public knowledge.
It is public knowledge, we generally ask people come in to view the record. Um, that would be on the file, so it would be on the record, but we don't generally, you know, I never start out. You know, explaining who it is, I say, came in on a complaint, you can review the record.
If I wanna make sure that she's not risking herself by doing it, I'll simply go up, I'll observe it. I'll take the notes, I'll come back and I'll file it.
Yeah, either way, right.
Anyone, anyone can file a complaint, doesn't have to be a like a grief party or neighbor, yeah. Yeah.
But along those lines, Nate, it's gotta be. File. It can't be just a phone call, hey Nate, you know, I'm an anonymous caller, you know, there's XYZ.
Right.
Corner of A and B's lanes.
Yeah, we 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 prioritize all project, you know, there's so much stuff that we have to deal with, we'll always prioritize it, if it's something that's a. Public safety issue and we observe it ourselves, um, you know, that might change.
Chairman, I don't need to do that. My words gotta be good, if I say to you, go see this property, cuz it's, it's, come on.
Well, it's on the record now, so you know, they could find it.
No, I'm being serious here for a minute, you know, it's more John Q. Public, just an anonymous call out of the blue.
We, you know, so we'll, we'll often, we'll often take those and and kind of write out, write a a complaint up on a on a form. And it goes right to the bottom of the pile.
Yeah.
We're we'll likely never get to it, you know, it's not that we don't take it, but it's it's the lowest of the low priorities, you know.
Right.
Well, and anonymous.
Anonymous, yes, and and with the amount of complaints we have, we'd never, we'd rarely if ever get to it and get to anonymous complaints.
If we already have something in progress, I mean, I just had a case come up where I was already working on it. And I received an anonymous complaint that kind of validated what I was looking at, it kind of, you know, it can raise it up the pile or, you know, get me going on it, but.
So even even when complaints come in from other departments, I mean, I I don't know what Nate does, but when when I was in his position, I still fill out a complaint form. It like came from the building department, so it's, so there's a file, there's a, there's a complaint form, we start a file, you know.
Yeah, I'll ask first for, I I mean, I sometimes I just file the e- the email.
An email.
Have them put it in writing that way, whatever way they can put it in writing, but we always.
If I send you an email, that's good enough.
Yes.
Yep.
Being the vice chairman.
I mean, I could.
But it will be in the file, so you know.
Yeah, well, we do make people do a little legwork, if they wanna know, they have to come in and look, you know. Um, just uh while Nate's here, we're we're going through individual things, I just wanted to maybe mention a few things related to site plans. Um, twenty, we approved twenty-one seventy-seven Winston Road. A while back, it was at least a year and a half ago or so, um. Nate and I went on a walk for this last week, cuz they weren't following their site plan and their grading at all, that's that, that's um. Next to that quarry where all the rocks slid off today.
Well, no, uh, isn't six, isn't six fifty-nine?
Uh, I'm on twenty-one, twenty.
Oh, never mind, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-one seventy-seven, I'm just looking at the ones where I have the, where I have my comments.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other ones, ninety-two Brightwood Avenue, that's um part of uh Torrington Four Wheel.
Yep.
Um, they, yeah, they built that, they built that bar, that, you know, building and they didn't indicate a um. A curb cut and they put the exit right out onto the street and it's kind of a blind exit, so there's issues with that. And they never pulled anything for the curb cut with engineering, they just kind of did it, so. Um, I'm still working with uh with engineering to to enforce that one. Um, don't know how we're gonna, what we're gonna do about that, we, we may, if if engineering can approve it. We might just ask him for a modified plan, if engineering can't approve it, then he's gonna have to do something with the with the building to put a. To put the garage door on the other side of the building. I don't know what else to say. I, you know. That's uh, if it's a, if it's a safety issue, we can't let him continue pulling trucks in and out of there.
Well, because he's picking up space on the road.
Yeah, well, and it's, 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 it's just blind when he's a lot of there, yeah. It's, well, it's blind to the left when you're coming, when you're coming out of there.
It's a cut, it's a cut through, right?
Yeah, and. Um, and the last one is, I'd mentioned this last month, ten fifty-eight East Main Street, the 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 coffee truck. He's done absolutely nothing, not not a single condition of that permit was done. Um, so, uh, you know, the, I sent, I sent a notice and I think everybody might have gotten a copy of the notice. Um. Giving him to the beginning of August to to get things done, if not, he's gonna, just gonna have to remove everything from the property until everything's done. And then if everything gets done, he can move the stuff back, you know, we can't, we can't incentivize him. And operating on the property without doing anything he was supposed to do. Fines, yeah, daily fines. Yep.
And and my point. You know, always, my position on daily, my fines is there, I forget it.
Right.
I'm not gonna forgive it.
Right.
Gave you plenty of time.
Well, and it's, and it, my, my. Point on this one is he's been operating for eight months, we we approved it last October. You know, and and he's been operating in violation the whole time, gave him, gave him time until the spring, then gave him time until May. And no- nothing was done, so.
And Jeremy, I believe his, his, is his appeal period over for his fines anyway at this point?
Oh, so I didn't get that far yet, it was just a cease and desist.
Okay, but his, but his appeal period for the cease and desist anyway.
Is August fifth.
So.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I gave him until that amount of time.
Okay, yeah, so after that, he won't even be able to bring it to ZBA and, you know.
So then, then he'll be able to, I guess, be able to appeal his fines, but. You know, that's, that's a different process, but. Um, so anyway, I'll I'll have a better, I will have a, probably a better update in August for that one.
So that the. Home plant blast that happened today on Winston Road. This is, that was just north of this where these bars are.
Yeah. No, it went straight across the road. No, so we, so that was approved by us, that.
I don't remember doing it.
I don't remember doing it.
It was, um.
Who is it, who is it that's doing?
Two years ago, well, it's, I, I forgot his name, it's, it's, it's under like AJ Resources is the, is the property owner.
Is it the same guy that owns where the sheds are?
No, no, separate property. Yeah, uh, they did.
I'm behind on that, is that what closed down uh Old Route A?
Yes.
What's that?
Oh, okay, I didn't know it. Alright.
Plan blast and it brought rock.
Well, it was a, it was a planned blast, it just went out, went, 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 went off the rails, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so uh.
Can you hear about that?
Yeah. So that, I, I believe um that's not due to come back to us until like next summer. Um, for for a renewal, or at least next spring, I'll have to look at that date again. So. That's, that's what I have on the site, on the site plan side.
Uh, quick, quick question for Nate, going back and thinking about that uh Tornford West property, um. When there's a visible real estate agent sign on the property, do, do you call them? They may know something about what's going on with the property that. You know, otherwise.
Fully aware, and trust me.
Yeah, I know that Ashley generally is good about following up on those types of details, um, but.
It's temporarily off the market now, it was on the market last year, they canceled it. And now it's the same, it's the same.
I'll definitely bring.
Back on the market for a day and I was back on temp and I'm, I would. In my opinion, I would guess to believe it's because they haven't cleaned up with it, we're probably, they told the Realtor they would do. Is what I'm thinking.
Right, that's, I remember my question.
Alright.
Do we, do we know if there's an actual owner, if this, or if it's the, if it's.
It's a bank that owns, I, I have no idea, I I didn't, this came in while I was away.
So we're going after an owner, we're not going, we're not going after the, the uh, the maintainer for the bank.
I was just, I was suspect that it was an inheritance on someone who maybe ended up with.
No, she outwrote, oh, she outwrote a couple of, three years ago, two years ago.
Okay, well, I'll definitely bring it up to Ashley to to follow up on and just to get a status on that for everyone, cuz I'm I'm just not sure where she was.
I'll take you to go on vacation.
And also just, I guess, uh, you know, she, most of her, a lot of her time has been taken up by the Yankee Peddler case, which is hopefully. You know, getting to a point of closure soon, but she did testify and backed with that and, you know.
Pieces on.